Okay, we'll open the meeting for Monday, April 25th. Entertain a motion except the agenda is may be amended.
I'm going to add Susan Gallo in Citizens Input.
Okay.
All right, well, let's after four, let's make five Short Term Rental Gallo.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
So five will be Short Term Rental Update Gallo, Susan.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
And then everything else moves down a number.
No. Okay, on favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a lot of minutes here tonight.
Yeah, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept the minutes of March 28th, 2022. I didn't see anything on here.
I just read through it again. I have nothing on here to change.
Okay.
Okay, on favor of accepting March 28th as presented, please say aye.
Aye. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the April 6th Special Select Board Meeting. The same thing here.
Just so you know, the reason you had there's a black and white one and a color one. The color one is the one I sent you. The black and white one, Lucretia found a couple of typos, and that's actually corrected for typos.
This one here.
This one here.
Yeah, this is the one I'm reading.
Okay.
Okay.
So just so I'm sure we approved the right draft.
So, all right. We'll do the one that's not stapled. Okay?
Yep.
What were the corrections?
There were some typos that Lucretia found.
Okay.
All right, so then I'm gonna make the next motion to accept the minutes of April 11th Select Board Meeting. It was a regular meeting. Same thing here. This is where Jim Harrison came in.
Right.
We did all that.
So motion to accept April 6th and 11th as presented.
Yeah.
Aye.
And then the last one we have here is a Special Select Board Meeting of April 15th.
Yep.
And nothing there to change.
That was Executive Session, our discussion of the revised tip.
Right.
Yep.
And then I think he has two more coming towards the next one. So we had that other meeting.
We had the meeting on Thursday.
Right.
And there's one more. I think it's April 7th or something.
Or today.
Or today, yeah.
Yeah, today. All right?
Okay, on favor of accepting April 15th as presented, please say aye.
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 Do we have any Select Board concerns?
Not right now. Everything is enough on here for me.
Yep, and I have something under Other Business, but it's just to tell Chris what I talked to you guys about.
Okay.
It's not even an item. It's not worth an item on the agenda.
Okay, all right. So we made, so I guess we have nothing there. So then we made a-
Do we do some Executive Session?
No, we'll first start out. We started, we made number five, Short Term Rental. Chris, update.
Okay.
On Gallo proposal, and Susan is here. Can you pull up, so I've taken over as the interim zoning administrator twenty-six weeks ago now, Chet?
Yeah, about that.
Okay, so when I came to the desk, I had a couple outstanding items of people prior to. This is a timeline that Chuck had given us before he left, which was about eight or nine weeks ago. I had reached out to Susan, spoke with her, and then, you know, she wanted to tell me why and what, and I had told her that she needed to register first in order for us to listen to her, or even myself. So she did register within the next day. You know, there was an issue online registering, but then I gave her the information of the contact, and she got ahold of them, and she is registered as of now.
Okay.
And in the meantime, if you follow back this stuff that goes way, way back to, I don't know, March or whatever, you know, when she and her husband, I believe your husband, or speaking of another, okay. Okay.
I like to make them.
You know, this thing has racked up sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars' worth of fines. It's a one-bedroom unit, and I told Susan that how we normally do this is I'll make the presentation. I mean, you guys have seen this letter before. You know, from when Chuck wrote that letter to when I got ahold of was another two or three weeks or whatever. And then I reached out, and she then signed on. So I asked Susan, I thought she was gonna zoom in, but she's in town. So for her to come in and make a little presentation like we usually hear from someone. Then later on, the board goes into Executive Session, and they come out, and then I'll contact you tomorrow with what they say. Okay? So would you like to speak to, I mean, what was going on?
I guess.
Can she be heard from back there?
That's, I mean, she can for ours, because we have a microphone right above her just about.
Oh, okay. Do you want a copy of this? If you want to sit here.
Okay.
Or you can sit over there.
She doesn't bite.
She doesn't bite either. I'm gonna move out of the way so the camera goes at her. This is the same thing with Jim last week.
All right, so, oh, just what's happening?
Yeah, just, you know, I mean, what I have here in front of me is what the board had seen back in February.
Yeah, it's February 14th is the last date.
February 14th, and it's just going through, like, you know, there's a certified letter sent out on 3/24 to Scottsdale, Arizona. It is not the town's responsibility to make sure the letter gets there. That's the last place that was on file.
Okay, yeah.
So that's the town's job, and they did it, and that's what Chuck is saying here.
Yeah.
The letter balance not deliverable forward.
Yeah.
And then he starts going through where he was binging or tinging or whatever you through Airbnb.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And.
That's how it started through, so, yeah, I just didn't, when he, when I got this message through Airbnb, I, the first thing I thought was, it's a scam, because people, oh, these, all the time, oh, message me. Go to this, and we'll pay for this on this website, because you owe this, you owe that. So that was my first react, initial reaction. I just didn't know what this whole thing was, and I never got the letters. Like, I kept, like, asking, can you send, can you send the letter? I never got the letters to my home. So I just didn't understand what this whole thing was, and honestly, until I finally talked to Jim. And we got on the phone, we worked together, and I was like, oh, okay, this is, like, completely legit. No problem, and I registered, and that was pretty much what happened. So, but yeah, I was, it was just kind, I really didn't understand what this was, and I didn't understand through Chuck, and I didn't understand why I was going through Airbnb, and that really kind of threw me off with, like, if it was legitimate or not. And so once I finally, I finally, there's no prob, like, I have no problem doing it. I just didn't, no, I didn't understand.
I mean, and I'm just going through, like, Chuck's letter here to us, and it's basically telling us, you know, he tried getting all, he did send out a letter, but he got returned back.
The certified letter did not make it to her?
The certified letter, but that's not our, it does say letter balance not deliverable, unable to forward.
That's so strange.
So, and that's to 7791 East via.
Sure.
Is that where you receive your tax bill?
Oh, yeah, I don't have problems getting mail there, so when I didn't get anything in the mail, I'm just like, I'm just, you know, you're very skeptical, because there's a lot of
Right.
things out there, and I've handed over money before and paid things on websites that people have asked me to as I thought it was legit, and I ended up not, you know, it just, there goes my identity and my money and everything, so.
But then the rest of the letter does go on as why he pinged Airbnb to get through, and then he does talk about that you did have some conversations. So I guess the board's gonna be asking those conversations where it was like, in some of them, it says that you were going to sign up, but you didn't.
Oh, no, I did try, and then it kept asking me for a registration code, and I'm like, oh my, I was like, I don't, so like, yeah, I tried to register, then I needed a code, and then I didn't have a code, and then I got stuck again with registering, and it kind of just, and then I, and I was dealing with a lot of medical issues the last year and a half, so that didn't help with, you know, staying on top of just life in general, so. It was, yeah, it was just really, I just didn't understand what this was all about until I talked to you, Jim, and you, you know.
And I, the same issue happened where it gave some kickback about some whatever on the website when you go to sign up. So I contacted lodging revs, and then lodging revs gave me an email with a contact, which I forwarded to Susan, and then the next day she was, she was on.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I just, you know, a couple more, like, two more minutes, and then just what you think or whatever. I mean, how this has worked in the past is that people have come in, and then there has been a reduced fine, so.
Yeah, I mean, I understand it now, and, you know, I do apologize for just being kind of ignorant to the whole, what this reliance is, and how it helps renters, and what it protects. I just, until I talked to Jim, I didn't understand any of it. It was, and then the trying to register, and then I had a roadblock there with actually completing the registration. So I, you know, whatever I can do, if I owe last year's fee, this year's, next year, I have no problem paying, but, you know, the fines, that would be really helpful, and if, like, that, the fines are just, would be detrimental to me right now.
So if you could answer a couple questions for me?
Sure.
At what point did you reach out to us and try to correct this?
I, it was when all our-
Did you speak to our previous zoning administrator?
Did I speak to?
Yes.
I think it was just Chuck through Airbnb messaging. And he was giving me his, trying to give me his phone number. It got blocked. I gave him my phone number. That got blocked, and it was like, then we went and talked for a few weeks, so, because he was trying to figure out how to con, I was like, you know, just so I know it's legitimate, can you please contact me by a letter or this or that, and then, you know, and then I want to hear from him for weeks, and then.
Where's your property located?
Uh, at Trail Creek.
Okay.
Yep, it's, yep, Trail Creek.
So one-bedroom unit up in Trail Creek?
And you've been renting it since?
Um, on and off since, like, 2015, 14?
Okay, so before the, before everything was taking place. And you've had no problem receiving your tax bills?
No, I'm nervous. I don't, yeah, oh, well, you know what, everything they, I pay online for my tax bills with the, I go down to the city, I'm gonna pay online.
But is that, so the address that he has there, though, in Scottsdale, is that your address?
Yeah, yeah, but I've never received anything from him, and that's what made it like, okay, is this legitimate? Because anybody through Airbnb is like, hey, I'm so.
You pick it up regularly?
Sorry?
So you pick up your mail regularly in Arizona?
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah.
I was just wondering why certified would be returned without pickup.
Sorry?
Well, I would wonder why certified mail was returned without pickup.
Well, yeah, that's concerning, like, why would, why I did not get that, and it got rejected, is very odd, because I get my mail without a problem, usually.
Do you have the letter on file?
Chuck has, yeah.
If you would have sent an Amazon package, I would have gotten, okay.
So Lisa's trying to log in, Chet.
No, she got kicked out. She was in earlier.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, it was just a really lot of back and forth and roadblocks, and it felt very unclear to me, and I was very hesitant, but once Jim contacted me and kind of like, walked me through everything, and really helped me get through those two steps I had to register, because I couldn't even, like, log on the first time and get the code to even register. Yeah, it just, it, I didn't make any sense to me, so until I talked to Jim, that's when everything just kind of came together, and he helped me get registered.
Sounds like you had a lot of conversation with him back in '21, where you said back and forth with owner on Airbnb and what to do, how to find website, how to connect with town, Select Board Meeting, and then you stopped.
Oh, he was like, okay, well, he said, go to a meeting, go on to Town of Killington, and go on a, there's a meeting you can attend, but then I did, and ended up being canceled, and he said, oh, it's postponed, we don't know when the next one will be, and that's kind of where I was like, okay.
Yeah, I think what Chris is talking to here is that, in this letter from Chuck, it is stating that, he said, in order to talk to the Select Board Meeting, you need to register first. And then it says he was going back and forth on Airbnb of showing how to register.
Yeah, he, I tried to register, and I hit a roadblock, and then I didn't hear back from him about how to get past that first, because like Jim, how you had to contact somebody to get me actually
Yeah.
the code, this code, I guess I had a code out there that I needed to get, so, yeah, I just, like, after trying to register, it didn't work the first time, and then, I don't know, Chuck went away. I never heard from him.
Is that it, Chris?
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we get, we have this whole long meeting ahead of us. You're welcome to leave, and I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
All right?
I do apologize. I wasn't trying to, like, evade or whatever, but when you get messages through Airbnb, you're kind of like, whoa, you know, like.
Except for when it's renting your place.
Well, yeah, yeah, except, no, you know, there's people who come on, and they want to rent your place, and they send you money.
Yeah.
And then they cancel a night, you refund them, and then by every, everything goes through ACH and cleared. That person who sent you money then wanted a refund for one night, because they had to shore on their trip, doesn't even exist, and I, you lose all your, the whole money, because they never even had the money to start with. There's just a lot of scams on Airbnb, it's a little sheep, you know, they, every, those scammers are looking for the next thing. So that was just through Airbnb, it did get a little, I was a little apprehensive about it, and then while the roadwalks, and then I went to the meeting, and it was canceled, I was like, okay, well, I don't know, and then Jim came along and helped, so. But thank you for hearing me out.
We'll end up going into Executive later, and then I'll email you tomorrow, and then give me a call, okay?
You want me to call you?
I'll give you, I'll tell you when I'm in, and I'll give you what we've decided.
Okay.
And if you want to give me a call, you can give me a call.
Okay.
All right?
I'll let you call me.
All right.
When you're ready. I've called you a million times.
Thank you.
All right?
Thanks, guys.
Have a good one.
You too. Have a good night.
So now we're at Citizens Input, I guess?
Did you do liquor stuff yet?
No. No, we haven't gotten to that.
By the way, Citizen, sorry.
So for anyone that is zoomed in, or yourself, if you have anything you'd like to bring up that's not already on the agenda, could you let us know? Raise your hand, unmute yourself. Some way we know that you have something to say? I'm not seeing anything at this time. So Board of Liquor Control? I just have.
Number one here, it says, for renewal, SNL Entertainment, DBA Mobile Sports Pub, First, Third, and Outside. See as paid, last seminar is November 8th and 21st, there's no changes. I'll make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with this renewal.
Okay. In favor? Aye. And I guess I have this outside consumption.
The other one's a new outside consumption for Casey's Caboose. It has maps and the letter.
I'll give you some comments.
So outside consumption permits for Fire Truck Brewery, DBA, Casey's Caboose, 1930 Killington Road. Outside consumption would be in the area, and it says see attached.
And they're putting.
And it says permanent use three seasons.
Yeah.
And it's from 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So, and the second page is just saying outside consumption would be in the area described below. The purpose for this permit is to be able to accommodate a greater number of people that request outdoor seating. Four to five picnic tables parallel to the tree line, approximately thirty feet across from the front entrance, with a perimeter of forty-five feet by twenty feet. The area would be roped off, isolated from the parking lot, but not infringe or impede delivery or emergency vehicles. Siners would be placed clearly stating where consumption could take place, and non-permanent barriers erected to enclose. And then the next one is a picture of, it's showing that where the picnic tables would go, where I guess currently there is parking now, if I'm right. So.
How does this affect their required parking, if they're taking out forty-five feet of spaces?
They didn't come to zoning.
Four spots.
They didn't come to zoning, I don't, I would assume it's four spots, but I don't know.
Before you get to that.
But I don't know how the vision of liquor will allow, I thought it had to be.
It has to be connected to your building.
Yeah.
You can't have a freestanding area without it being connected with alcohol service in between, because there's no way for a server to walk out there without crossing out of a unlicensed area.
So if they had done, like, to the right of the entrance going this way.
One hundred percent, it would be fine.
Then that's fine.
Yeah.
So.
Right along the front edge of Casey's.
More towards the back door, the dumpster.
As long as it's connected, so you're walking through licensed area.
They've got seating on their deck. If it was right in front of the deck, they could have stairs.
Right.
Or if it was on the backside, they could do the same thing there.
Right, yeah, they just have to get it.
I never
I don't have an issue with them having an outside consumption.
Never knew this rule until a year ago. It was brought up by our liquor investigator, where we would license the upper parking lot of the Foundry. And the other, all the, in past investigators allowed that. Now we have to license everything from the doorway all the way up through stairs, et cetera. So it has to be cordoned off, so no one can leave with alcohol, it's.
So that from the entrance to that area would have to be roped off?
Correct.
That's what I, when I was reading that, I was like, I don't think that's gonna fly, because it's not roped off. So I'm gonna ta, I'm gonna make a motion to table this. I will contact Michael and Andy. We're not against an outdoor consumption committed at Casey's Caboose. It's just that.
It's not meeting the requirements, right?
It's not meeting the requirements, being attached somehow to the structure.
And if they put.
Or roped off, you know, or a pathway to.
Well, and if they rope it off, they lose a whole area of parking.
And that, and they do have to verify the parking part of it.
Right.
Okay.
Well, for this year, we can give it to them.
We can still do it, but you want to let them know that they're gonna have to do it permanently.
Yeah, and so, and basically what they're saying here is, but not infringe or impede delivery or emergency vehicles, and I don't know, just, I don't think you want people drinking in an area back and forth in the.
I mean, I get the idea of putting tables, and I agree with them for it.
Yeah.
It just, it has to be connected to, like, our previous licensed area.
So I'll get ahold, this is my first seeing this. I'll get ahold of them on tomorrow.
I'm wondering if they could put it right over against the deck and leave the traffic lane out by the tree line.
Yeah, they.
Just move it over against the deck where they wouldn't be leaving the area.
I mean, I think what they're trying to do here, though, too, is make it so it's permanent for every year, and then they're gonna have to get into their parking then for.
Right. Okay. So you can table this for now?
I don't think it does very well year-round, so I wouldn't need to worry about that.
Yeah, I'm not worried about it either. But I'm just, what I'm getting at on here is this is one, this was going through the town clerk.
Yeah.
It should be coming to the zoning to take a look at that.
Okay.
Has to go zoning because it's impeding parking?
Yeah.
Okay.
It affects the parking. You know, it's similar to what River Shed did when they put the deck in.
It took away park?
No, they showed that it didn't affect their parking, because they put the deck out over where the bank goes down.
Okay.
So it did not affect, but they showed that it didn't affect it.
They had to go to Chuck for zoning because it was a permanent structure.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
And then.
Structure.
And then parking came in.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Great.
So Rec Department Staff Reallocation Discussion.
Thank you. That is why I'm here.
Okay.
So I reached out to, I brought this up at the Rec Commission meeting, and then I brought it to Chet. We've seen an increase in just demand and need in the Recreation Department. As you know, when I was brought on, I would, my job description was modified to be both part of the after-school program for twenty hours a week, and twenty hours a week for the Recreation Department. We're seeing, since COVID, with an increase in population, both with the school population and full-time residents, we're getting greater, I'm getting, we, I say that all the time, we, like, I'm getting a lot of requests for things like adult leagues, increase in facilities, you know that where our pool is aging, we're gonna be looking at a new Recreation Facility, hopefully soon, and there's just, with that increased demand, in order to meet that demand, and I think do service to the community, we need another full-time person under me as a program director. That's my suggestion. There are other ways to possibly, you know, at this current moment, we haven't done things, there's certain things that have been on the, that Recreation has done in the past that I can't get done with the twenty hours a week, and so we can continue to limit services, but I think what I'm hearing resoundingly is that the community would like more services.
Yeah, one thing that, just so everybody's aware, if you look at the Rec, the Recreation Budget, there's two part-time positions. One is for the pool, and one is for camp. That would be incorporated into this, so we'd be taking those two part-time positions. So if you look at total hours-wise from the Rec Department, if you took those two positions that are basically twenty hours a week for the time that they exist, and the cost of them, and then had the Rec Director not involved with the school at that point, we would still have the same usable hours in town. We just now have added that other twenty-hour piece. And we're taking the two part-times, including in this, which is basically like half of the cost, and then the other half is making up for the, for the Rec Director not working full-time during the time of the after-school program.
Yeah, we do, right now I do have a part-time marketing person to help with social media, ten hours a week, year-round. I also have a full-time pool director in the summer, and we bring on a full-time camp director as well, which, that is its own issue with bringing on seasonal staff that hold very, very important positions. Each year getting someone brand-new, so having that, I mean, that's an alternate belief that I had, that if you have continuity of program, a program coordinator, and then you're talking about improved and continuous quality of camp, pool, aquatics programs, instead of having to retrain someone every single year for those really important positions, but that's, that's sort of even an added benefit of adding this position on, but Chet is correct, that we bring on additional staff.
So my question that comes back, the position that you were talking about of the Camp Rec Director, okay, for the summer and the swimming pool, okay, they're both full-time in the summer?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think, actually, just to clarify, if you look at the spreadsheet, the one is actually Aquatics Manager, and then the Social Media and Marketing.
I added camp by accident.
Yeah, camp, I still need a full-time camp director. That, they can't run camp and then also run.
So how would your position change?
My position wouldn't change. If you look at, there is a second spreadsheet of the things that the program coordinator would do. Basically, what I did was I took my original job description, and I highlighted everything. So on my, I didn't give you my original job description. When I was hired, my job description was four, is four pages, right? So I highlighted everything that we haven't managed to do, like school break camps, things that we have offered in the past, certain trainings, things like that, so that, those are things that we could bring on, plus the things that we're asking for. I would still manage from the high level, our grants, trails, after-school camp, and then the things that are sort of, are, people are asking to grow, and that are sort of slipping by the wayside as far as quality, I think are mostly our program, like communicating with people in a timely manner.
So you would still be involved with the after-school program?
Oh, yeah, I think it's an important piece.
I just, I wonder from a standpoint of the school has a portion of this, and I would hate to redirect something and have the school like, wait a minute, what are you doing to us? So that's my guy.
Yeah, no, I would like to stay.
The school's not taking anywhere else other than Sarah for now.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm just saying. But I think in time, to be really honest with you, you, as you would evolve as a person and stuff develops, I could see you sunsetting from that and passing the baton on to somebody else.
Yeah, and depending on who we brought on, if they, if that was a possibility, and on, and actually if this other person, right now, and we know this is across the schools in general, the ability to have a substitute is like nonexistent, right? So if, I haven't gotten sick this whole school year, but if I did, it would be very stressful for after-school, right?
With me, and a lot of parents. A lot of parents.
I want, and a lot of parents, and if I wanted to do a training or something like that, so to have an extra person.
I um, I can attest, dropping my kids off to it on a regular basis. It's a zoo down there, okay? Compared to what it was years ago, okay? And there's a lot more kids in the program. And this is why I suggested early on that I think you need more support. And we need to look at a structure down there for them instead of running the kids to the town hall basement and doing these, you know, finding places to scatter them. We have grown as a community and are gonna continue to grow. And this is a very important program to me. And I think to a lot of other people that are moving to this town. It's, we have younger families moving to this town right now and we have to provide these very services that they were, you know, grown to expect when, from the other communities they were in before they came there.
Yeah.
So I applaud you for forward thinking.
Thank you.
And doing it. And I think it's something we need to really consider to.
Then my question was just gonna come back to trying to make sense of, you're looking for a new full-time person. That full-time person is not necessarily going to be the aquatics manager. Or is that person.
Yes.
They're taking those two spots plus the other stuff.
So if, I'm not sure if you.
So when I read this and it says current budget, there's a product manager in social media, the person that you will be putting out for will be able to cover that.
So I, I used to do the social media stuff, so something would come off of my plate and I would handle that.
Okay. But so, so then, so that's on this side here. And then on this other side here, you have the healthcare or whatever for a full-time position. Okay? And then you have the salary times forty hours is X with a grand total of fifty. And then you're showing that this person would already be covered of twenty-two thousand five sixty from there. So it's a difference of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for what you believe is going to get you to be able to handle what you got plus you believe you will be able to do X?
I see what you're asking. Um, well, I think that there's, there's everything that we do and then the, everything that we don't do. So people are asking for adult leagues, right? That's very common in the communities that they've come from. We don't offer that. We, you know, pickleball leagues, things like that. So you're gonna provide those services. You're go, um, the ability to have those like timely interactions expanding and um, creating quality youth programs, those are growing um, in a way that it's difficult to be at school and also answer co, like coach questions on the fly. You know, those things just back up. So, so that's what the, the person's going to do and provide to the community. Um, and then you do have more bandwidth. For example, I put together a survey um, to go out to the community about, um, and I had come to a select board meeting. And there really hasn't been a lot of response to that, but we really need that information and we really wanna ask what do you need. But I don't have the space to like actually cha, you know, go out in the community and be like, hey, fill this out the way you would. So having an extra person allows those special projects, those things like that to actually happen.
So in the, in the end, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars, but then there's possible future revenues and you don't know what that is.
I, I didn't wanna say, I mean, I know things like a, more adult leagues, um, offering trainings, right? If this person, um, to do lifeguard trainings and things that have been revenue in the past, but to have, and um, more specialty camps, we make some money from specialty camps, but they actually take a lot more time to implement, things like that. Plus.
Five grand, ten grand, that's all.
Oh, yeah, I, 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 at first I've to modestly say five grand. Um, I looked at it. I thought adult leagues, maybe a thousand specialty camps. I think we could make another two thousand and then trainings, you know, five to a thou, five hundred to a thousand. But I think that's to be modest.
About twenty-two thousand dollars and that's what you feel it's gonna take after the revenue. It's a cost of twenty-seven thousand. We don't have the price in there for the extra revenue.
Yeah.
But there should be something there and you're looking for us to approve that.
Yes.
For the July one budget that starts.
Correct. Cause basically, um, the other thing that will be adding pressure to this position in the near future is the fact that we're gonna, we are gonna be actually planning new rec facilities and things of that nature. And we're gonna be going through uh, a lot of design process as well and, and different grants that we're gonna be looking for, so.
Well, grants alone.
Yeah.
You know, Sarah's caught up because she doesn't, she's short-staffed and has to work registering people or checking kids in. That's not gonna let her write a grant.
So, so Sarah.
We don't wanna miss those opportunities when they come.
Yeah. So can you just like in the last year, tell us some of the grants that you've got, you know, like, we've got public listening and we're gonna have other people watching this on pay, or we're gonna have other people listening to it on, you know, something else later on, or we have somebody writing a newspaper article too. So, so you're asking, you're asking for about twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of money without. But over the last year, I mean, I, I know you just got a bicycle or whatever.
Yeah, so I, I worked with, with um, Lisa Davis Lewis and we worked together to do, to get the VORC grant. Um, and previously I had written the RTP grant. I had written the Better Connections grant.
You have dollar amounts off the top of your head?
Um, so for VORC, we got seventy-five thousand, I believe it is. And then um, we just got the Transportation Alternatives grant, which again, Lisa and Devin Neary, we worked on that. Um, so that was, I believe thirty thousand. Lisa, I'm looking for Lisa to shake her head. Yeah. Um, and before those, the other ones that I had gone out for, I did not receive until I partnered with them. But I, I go out for as much as I can see, um.
And that's, that's, I just want people to understand that.
Right, like the Better Connections.
You've gotten over a hundred thousand dollars in the last year of grants.
Mm-hmm.
And you're looking, you're looking to increase that, but you need help and you're asking for a, a full-time employee that will be taking up some of the part-time work in the summer. And so it's a difference of twenty-seven thousand. I don't have a problem.
And when you talk about the revenue side, you talk, you know, one of the things that with any of these grants, there is some, some legwork that happens in, during the year. You know, where we're going out and we do get to count that as in-kind contribution.
Yeah.
So we may be able to replace some of the cash um, in-kind expense with, you know, and, and, and generate maybe another five or ten thousand dollars.
And Sarah, how is your program, uh, how is registration for your program this summer already?
Um, we filled within, we filled camp within three weeks of opening.
That's my point.
Yeah.
I wouldn't make it these days.
And this is, this is where this community.
Parent. I would not make it as a parent these days. We used to be able to just walk on.
I know. Everybody was a last minute signup years ago.
Not now, that's why I brought it up. I think it's important.
Yeah.
And so it shows you the growth of the programming and that's great. And, you know, people are obviously finding value in it and want to return. And so I think that um, this is, it's very important for this town to invest in this.
Thank you.
So I'm for it, but I think we need to, you know, we'll, we'll talk an executive about how to, how this is gonna work.
How's your stop and looking for the summer?
We are still short. Um, I'm talking, I'm in conversation with a few people, hoping that they'll come on. Um, and we hope, I hope to bring on two more people and then we can open up people, spots for people who are on the waitlist.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how are you, uh, how are you set with lifeguards?
Um, we have some that we're, I think we'll be fine with lifeguards. We'll bring some more on, but I think we'll be okay.
Just wanted to pulse check, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
May have had, I don't know if she has to renew.
Her lifeguard?
She had a lifeguard.
You've signed, you're signing her up? No, she's, she's, she's locked in for camp. Taken her out of camp. She's done a very good job.
She had, she had a lifeguard. I'm just saying in case you haven't either.
Well, I mean, we.
Do it.
Griffin Van Niel, I don't know if you know him. He was our rec intern this um, winter, spring. And he and I really worked on uh, like looking at aquatics plans, way to, ways to like get families and kids engaged. Just even ideas like birthday parties and things like that. There's so many ways to get people engaged in our pool. But if each year you're spending your time reteaching someone new about how to just manage the basics and operations, you can never get to that other stuff then. So.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
I'm for it. I guess we'll just talk about it later and then find out from you, an executive, where the ones are gonna go.
Yep.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Oh, a letter of support to the state regarding the Dean Hill Road Bridge?
Lisi, you want me to start or you wanna start?
Did um, what's his name ever get in?
Yeah, he was in.
I'm just, you know, I can say that we met last week with Devin. Um, so I met, um, Darryl, met um, Young who, who's on the um, TAC. And um, Devin Neary from Rullin Regional Planning Commission talked about this state priorities list for bridges. And um, we talked about first of all, the bridge down by Mozart's is, is scheduled. That's a state grid and that is scheduled um, to be reconstructed in, I think not this year, but the following year. So it's, it's on the state high priority list, so that should get done at some point. I don't know when exactly. Um, then we talked about whether we could put the Dean Hill Road, the culvert, right, the intersection of Dean Hill and Killington Road on the list and we went over and took a look and obviously it, it certainly needs to be upgraded. The question is that Devin's not sure whether it would qualify because uh, it's federal funding. And in the past, federal funding hasn't um, allowed you to. Hasn't allowed you to use funding to convert culvert to a bridge. Devin is waiting to hear back on that, but in the meantime, he said we should move forward with getting a letter from the um, select board in, in support of putting this project on the priorities list.
Just so everybody's aware, um, as we were doing a study, we had a grant to study this bridge a couple of years ago. And we were looking at the possibility because what the, the culvert overall is in decent shape, but the bottom was rusting through and they were allowing grants to rebuild culverts with concrete. Be cul, you know, the, the, the bottom of the culvert and the inverts. And we were hoping to do that to save the culvert and not have to spend, you know, the kind of money that it's gonna be. Because a bridge is a far more expensive. We were, we were turned down for converting it or for rebuilding the invert because it doesn't meet the flow requirements that, that the Roaring Brook has. And we were told that we need a thirty-eight foot spanned bridge. The thirty-eight foot spanned bridge is the same as the one that's on Ravine Road, which ran just over a half a million dollars. Um, and that was for, you know, how many, six years, eight, eight or nine years ago. On top of the fact that because that has two outbound lanes, it would also be a, a fifty percent wider bridge. It would be a three-lane bridge instead of a two. Um, so looking at that, we were saying, well, that's a fifty percent more, which would be about eight hundred thousand. So in today's world, it might be like one point two million. So when they brought the question up is where are the priorities for the bridges in town? Um, that's actually one we would love to get into the, the state's bridge program. They were, what brought it to our attention was they were talking about the bridge that's on the little River Road extension piece. Um, which most people probably don't even know exists when you turn onto River Road. It's there on the right on that little.
Yeah.
Turnout. That's another bridge that is in very poor condition. Um, but it is technically the bridge to nowhere. I mean, it might be cheaper, cheaper to buy the, the land around it and create a big channel than it would be to rebuild a bridge there. But that is one of the things that they were looking at from the town's perspective. This is a far more.
Just one thing, Dan, and after he went out there, he said that bridge would actually never meet um, the state criteria because it is basically a bridge to nowhere.
Right. And that's, and I, yeah, I, I knew, and that's why we were saying, this is the one that actually has a huge impact on the town. Um, so the hope is, is that they will allow this to be into the, into the bridge program, um, for future bridges. Um, what we're probably looking for tonight is just an authorization for the town manager to send, because it has to be in by Thursday. If we're gonna do this, we're waiting for them to say, is it good? And then we're gonna send in the letter um, with getting it on the bridge program in that process. And they sent us a, this afternoon, we got a sample letter that somebody else had done. We're just gonna basically copy it and, and I would sign that if you would authorize me to do that.
There's no question when we go to rebuild, that has to be a bridge.
Yeah.
It's not capable of holding the water.
Right.
I'll make a motion to allow the town clerk to, I don't know, county manager.
Clerk.
He's the town manager to move forward, um, preparing the letter of support to the state bridge priority list. Dean Hill Road um, Bridge.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
If you can just send it to, you know, just send it so we see what it says.
Yeah, no, I will, I will actually prepare it tomorrow morning because that came in right at the end of today, the sample. I'll create one, send it to you guys. I'll sign it. And all I'm waiting for is the, the notice to send it to them.
And nobody has any comments by the end of tomorrow?
Yeah.
We're. And we don't have to come in to sign it.
No, I'll just, I'll, basically I'm gonna say, at a, at a meeting, at the select board meeting.
Up there.
They authorized the, the, the letter of support and go through all the explanation as to why it's important.
All right.
We know, we wanna make sure.
I just wanna make sure that I see a copy of the letter and then that way.
No problem.
And then by the end of the day, nobody says anything. It's, you can send it all.
I think Darryl is here specifically for this. Does he have anything he wants to say?
Darryl, you got anything you wanna throw in?
I think it's a, a great candidate bridge to get in the program and um, we all did a site visit. Uh, Devin and Lisa and myself went down and did a site visit last week and took a look at it. You have a convergence of strains that hit it at its head, at its headwater side of the bridge. And um, it's, it doesn't look like it's gonna fall apart anytime soon. But it, it would be a long bridge, meaning greater than twenty feet. And, you know, if we had another twenty-eleven type incident that occurred, I think you'd want something bigger there. Or you're looking at potential washout, so um.
Learn right over.
Yeah. Well, cause that's a go around that corner.
It makes sense.
Right to the sewer plant.
Didn't bother going around the corner, just went right over the top.
Sewer plant, right in the pickle barrel parking lot. It's great.
Yeah. Okay.
So you got to get on that.
Good.
Yep.
Great.
All right. Thank you. And we have an appointment to the board of directors for Young Nam Kung?
Lisa, you wanna bring us up to speed on that?
Uh, sure. The um, Rullin Regional Planning had, had been pushing and Young would like to be appointed to the um, board of directors for the bus, Marble Valley Transit. Right now, um, Matt Kingsman is on the board um, for the resort. But um, we think it makes sense to have a representative from the town um, on the board. And Young is very interested in transit projects and he'd like to be on it. And at last term, week's planning commission meeting, the planning commission made a recommendation to the select board. The select board recommend Young to be appointed to the board. I think it's just a recommendation from the select board to the Marble Valley Transit. And Jen first submitted a letter to the select board, um, asking for the recommendation.
I'll make a motion to um, to the board to make a recommendation to the bus to appoint um, Young Nam Kung to the board of directors as a representative for Killington.
Second.
I'm in favor.
I just wanna make sure like, in, this board of directors, that it's, we have to be careful here. Because there are a lot of bus service that were discontinued. But it was discontinued based on that the condominium associations um, didn't wanna pony up funds for midweek buses or whatever.
Yep.
And I just don't wanna get this turned into that, this turns into a half a million dollar deal to the town of Killington.
That was the resort buses, right? Not the bus bus.
Right. Yeah. The resort decided not to pay their share of the.
No, it goes farther than that.
It wasn't their share.
It wasn't their share. That's what the condominiums were told. Okay.
Condominiums were told, but they were also managing the condos at the time period and were providing. When they stopped managing them, the bus service went away.
But they, but then they went to the bus service, they went to the condominiums and said, if you would like midweek busing.
You pay for it yourself.
It was like a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year per condominium. And the condominium said, no. So I don't want something that was gonna be a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a condominium owner now to turn out to be a hundred. now to turn out to be 125 times how many thousand condominiums? And we have a representative saying, we need this as a town. Just let's be careful, that's all.
Yeah, we should have a discussion with them.
You know, there should be, we have to come up with a plan for busing, but let's not jump, that's all. Eleven, I guess.
While we're on the sewer allocation first.
So just to bring everyone up to speed on the current Route 4 sewer allocations. First of all, the town has issued 161 and a half ERUs over since it was, the sewer was installed. There were some transfers and there were some, some allocations that were done as part of the bankruptcy when the, when the school went out of business, and some of those are reallocated in the original.
From the Rome School.
From the Rome School, not the, not the.
School.
Not the Castleton School.
No, or the elementary school.
Or the elementary school. So, so in that, in that process, there was, and part of the original contract, the town retained 15 units that they were supposed to be able to allocate as needed. Somewhere during that process, those 15 units were allocated to others, and the town did not have them to offer. And it really comes to fruition on the, on the old campus property where there were 26 units for that entire complex. Somewhere along the road around 2012, 11 or 12, the, the owner of the hotel came in and requested a split because he didn't feel that he needed all of those units. The town split the sewer units, 16 and a half, nine and a half, between the two units. But no one ever contacted Alpine Pipeline. So Alpine Pipeline then came in and said, well, first of all, they still were billing 26 units for the hotel property, and the other property didn't have any because none of those allocations got changed. But it turns out that the hotel needed actually 36. So the Alpine Pipeline did grant some of those. The town had to grant 10 more ERUs back to them. As a result, since we were giving away ERUs that were already allocated, the town is going to have to pay, from the sewer allocation, we're going to have to pay for those 10 units back to Alpine, which will probably end up around $25,000 to get us all current. We're trying to get all of the numbers matched up at this point. We still, the Alpine Pipeline says we have 142 units, I believe it is, at this point. And the reason the town has the 161, there are some that have been repossessed. There's, there's 15 from one property, two from another, and two from another. And then it turns out that there, in the bankruptcy allocations, there were another eight units that don't have matching Alpine Pipeline units. So we're working with those owners, and they haven't been being billed for those. So they've only been being billed for these for 10 years. So basically, the Alpine Pipeline position is they can either pay the sewer maintenance that they thought they had for that number of 11 years or whatever it is, or just buy them at their current value. The current value was cheaper at this point, so.
It's the current value.
5,000 each.
For an ERU.
Yeah, so that eight are going to have to buy additional Alpine Pipeline ERUs for their ERUs to be complete. And they're, we're going to, they're holding the repossessed ERUs, for lack of a better word, in escrow so that if they re-up them with their projects, they will be able to have them available to sell. So after going through all of this part of the conversation, basically, the town didn't have any more available Route 4 sewer units, okay? Their Alpine Pipeline has 37, I believe it is, that were available to reallocate, but we would have to work with them to do that, and they have, and that's for four different towns. Like, it all gets divvied up. But they did go to the city of Rutland and recently got approval for another 120 units. So we are going to be able to accommodate some of the new projects that are planned right now with a significant portion of those units. In addition, within five years, they are guaranteed to be able to get another 120. From, it's part of the contract, they get another 120 from the city. And if any of the large projects that are coming along related to housing, we would then be able to buy those units direct. They have enough capacity in Rutland to cover this. We now have capacity of units to be able to actually sell some to prospective users. And there's also, I think, one property owner that has some that they want to turn in. So if we have a buyer for them, we can sell those first. And they have to, basically, you have to go back to the select board and then be reallocated and sold.
Are they both, I call them part A and part B, the ones that they want to sell back or give back?
Yes, they're, they're part A, part B. So they have, they have everything. So basically, they have to sell back to Alpine, back to us, and then we have to both sell them to the new owner. So it's basically a pass-through that we have to go through from a, from an ordinance perspective.
How did we lose 15?
Doc, nobody knows, and we can't find it in the documents. Frank Hill's been looking, we've gone through all of the, the things that are recorded. The only thing that makes any sense is somehow the 15 got allocated as part of that bankruptcy that really weren't theirs. That's like, that's the only number that matches. It's kind of odd because they had the 26 for the campus, and I don't know where the other 15 were in the original sale.
Way back, that thing was loaded with sewer, more than it ever needed, and that's probably what brought down a lot of it.
223 was what we were supposed, we had a contract to be able to buy from Alpine, you know, but we had to do it within a certain amount of time, and we had the 15. And we still can get to that, you know, which would give us another 60 units to be able to sell through them.
120 units are both parts?
Yeah, well, the 120 units they're getting from the city of Rutland are allocated to Alpine Pipeline. We have to sell ours at the same time they sell ours so that they match.
Okay.
So we have the town sewer units.
We have unlimited town sewer units?
Yeah, it's, actually, our limitation is what is our system going to handle.
System handles.
So that's really what determines it.
No, so, I mean, I think that's the answer to the question, is that people were just selling and thinking, not remembering.
Right.
Part B is.
Part B has been the problem.
The Alpine, and we were selling, and nobody was buying the other.
We don't have any number other than the 223 that was originally allocated, raised on the system, and we got to then go back and look at our permit and say that we have to increase our.
Thank God we didn't sell up to 223.
Correct.
So part A costs what?
5,000, they're 5,000 each.
And then part B costs 5,000?
That's to the, that's to the person.
Route 4 sewer, because basically, the 5,000 ERU the town gets you from the bottom of Killington Road to the Pico Park and Line. That's, that's what that gets you, and then the rest of it goes to the city of Rutland.
On the eight, or the ones that, there are certain units that the city of Rutland or whoever foreclosed on, repossessed.
That's the 19.
That's the 19, okay? But within there, there are some that were bankruptcy that people bought that thought they had both? Is that true?
My assumption is they thought they had both, none of the paperwork was done, they never went to Alpine and got them allocated.
Right.
So there's eight that only have part A.
Okay, and then you had said.
The attorney.
You had said, you had said a few minutes earlier that we're short about 10?
We gave away 10 we didn't have.
And now that we need to get.
Yes.
And you said 2,500, so is our cost 2,500?
That's correct, yeah.
So.
We're getting a deal because of, this has been.
Right, but what I'm coming back to is that the folks that bought the eight that thought they had, is there a way of going to Frank and saying the town would like to make whole on that and have them at $2,500 instead of 5,000? I mean, can you ask that question?
I will ask that question. Basically, Frank, before I went away, asked for a meeting this week or next.
Right.
With those eight units, it's only two owners, and then say, this is what the situation is.
Right.
Technically, they haven't paid for any of those other five.
The O&amp;Ms.
For any, forever. The other eight have not paid, they have not been billed them. So they don't exist.
Okay.
As it sits today.
And do they, uh?
If the town wanted to participate at 2,500, that would mean they would only be for 2,500 each.
I'm not looking, I was thinking more of if they would cut.
Yeah.
Do they?
I don't, I don't, I don't believe so.
Some of those bankrupt ones are not hooked up or ever hooked up.
Correct, but they still pay O&amp;M and fees, so. I mean, and that's, I will ask the question.
We're here to help the taxpayer, and if I could ask the question of.
Oh, we're.
So back to it, the eight that you're speaking of right now that need to be corrected, are they users or non-users?
One was a user.
Okay.
And it was a user of only one.
Okay.
But now, all of them are going into being users.
Okay.
Here very shortly.
Okay.
So if you could just ask that question.
I will absolutely ask that question.
I mean, otherwise, it's $5,000 for them to become all A and B, which one?
Yeah.
You know.
So it's, yeah, it's an unfortunate thing.
It cost us 2,500.
What's, what's the O&amp;M for user?
Don't remember off the top of my head.
900.
They have a non-user?
I, the, they have a, they have a.
They have a rate too.
They have a rate too. There's an O&amp;M rate, which is if you have the ERU, you're paying X.
But is there a non-user rate or just a user rate?
No, just a user rate. Because users pay, you pay, everybody pays O&amp;M, users pay for flow. They have meters on everything.
Oh, really?
Yeah. On your, they have, they put, because I have it on my house, I'm outside the system, but it's a water meter.
All right. So some of these places need this part B really quick.
Yes, they do. That's why we're, we asked to have the meeting, and we're going to sit down as a group and try to resolve it.
Some attorneys in trouble, that's all I can say.
If they're alive.
Always makes you chuckle when.
Oh, doesn't it?
If they're alive or still have their license.
Hey, we have a request for road use from Killington State Race.
This is a, this, did we have the road race last year?
No, it hasn't been, it's been going for two years, that's why.
Wasn't here for two years.
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion to give permission for the Killington State Race road use.
They're using, on the Sunday, they're using Route 4 through River.
Different than what they were doing before.
Route 4 and East Mountain Road up, up the hill. And then on this Monday, for the time trials, they're going from Bridgewater down to Town Hall on River Road. So that's what they're requesting.
This is happening Memorial Day?
Yeah, Memorial Day weekend.
Nothing on Saturday?
Didn't, it didn't have anything there on Saturday that's affecting us, it was not in this letter.
Okay.
Related to that.
Is Gary doing it?
Yeah.
Good.
Make a motion to give, the town manager to give permission for the road use for the Killington State Race for Memorial Day weekend.
That's very good.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
And number 12 is more informational than anything?
Yeah, basically, this is just letting every, reminding everybody that on May 7th is Green Up Day in the state. And you can pick up your bags at Town Hall for Green Up Day to, to help clean up the roads and bring that trash for free to the transfer station. And it's also the weekend of the free bulky items.
May 7th and May 9th.
May 7th and 9th. Saturday and Monday are the days for the bulky day.
And it's 8 o'clock till 4 o'clock.
Yes.
There is no service on Sunday.
Right.
No service, go to church.
What did you say, 9 to 4?
8 to 4.
8 to 4.
So Saturday and Monday. But Green Up is only on the 7th.
That's correct.
Right.
Are they doing anything at the firehouse this year, or are they used to?
They still, they were talking about it, I haven't heard the definitive information about that, but we'll let everybody know once I know.
Okay. Town financials?
Town financials, just a couple of things I just wanted to bring to your attention. One is that the, the options tax is up significantly from last year at the same time, from 178,000 to 308, so that's doing very well. And our largest, largest revenue producer is usually this last quarter, so we could be beating our estimate by about 100,000, which would be great for this year. We are on target with our revenues. And as we go through and talk about the treasurer's report, you'll, you'll see where that is. On the expense side, as, as expected, you know, we have a couple of items that were changed during the year as far as the planning and zoning. So some of the expenses are up, but they are from actuals. But from a budget perspective, we're still within, within the correct range. Overall expenses, we are tracking pretty much where we should be. As expected, some of the vehicles and some of the things for the highway department are a little higher than normal. We had, we did have a, got killed on the sand budget this year with the amount of early ice storms that we had. So, but when you look at the bottom numbers and we're about, you know, our expenses, total expenses are about the same amount higher that they should be related to that budget. So I don't have anything of significance to report.
So my only thing is going to be, once again, on page one.
We're working on it.
It's, you know, it's information in, and, you know, state educations, we budgeted nothing, and our actual is nothing, but we have an actual from period nine of 2021.
Right.
You know, municipal taxes, which does totally throw off because when you, you go down to page two and it tells me the total revenues, we budgeted 5,463,000, and the actual is up until period nine was 10,798, which we know that's not right, so, I mean.
We're working on trying to be able to break it out because the problem is we can't, we, we, we can't break out the numbers unless we just go to an estimated formula, you know, which we can do and had been done in the past. But we're trying to find it.
We, we have a finance team now, and it's.
And he's been working on that.
And basically, you know, we send a bill out that has the bill broken, so I don't know why.
Because Nimric won't break that information.
I hate the word, Nimric won't let us.
I know.
There'll be a separate Excel spreadsheet, that's all.
That's what we're working on.
Okay, so page one, page two, page three, page four, page five. Police Department legal, you haven't moved the $12,000 yet over there. If we can get that done, I think we said we're going to put it over into yours.
Yeah, to town manager.
Okay.
Okay.
That's really big for me right now, you know.
And treasurer's report, we are currently, our balance is 8,800,000. Restricted funds of 2.4, and we have 5.2 due to the state of Vermont. So we're still in, in the black. We are running a little of the cash up a little bit for some of the planning work we're doing in the Tiff District that is coming out of the overall cash. And we will be, in the next, the next meeting, I will be talking about where we are exactly with that number and, and how we're going to carry that through to the end of the year, so.
So right now, we have about 1,005.
Yeah.
If we subtract out the state of Vermont and the restricted funds and subtract that from the 8.8, so, and that was at the end of March.
Yeah.
So do we know what it costs us to run only April, May, June, July?
It's usually around.
Money comes in and it's August.
We get.
Or July.
Comes in in July, we get a million dollars in July typically by the end of the month. We will be, we have enough cash right now if we don't have too many more big expenditures to get through. The question will be with, with some of the, the work we're doing, we may need to take some short-term money and tie it to that.
Right.
That would be the only thing, right now, I want to say it's like $800,000 for these three months.
Running from May to June?
Yeah, 8, 900,000 is typical.
So you got about 600,000, 700,000 dollars, and you still get money coming in in these.
We will get, we get another influx right at the end of May, beginning of June, so that no one with the book, we get another. And we're also going to get the $200,000 hopefully for options tax.
Right, and then we should get some other state funds.
Yeah, there's some other, there's some other smaller items that'll be coming in. But, you know, I, I'm not concerned about the end of this year. I, we want to talk about, you know, what's the cash going to look like at the end of the year? the year and, and do we need to make any adjustments?
So then, I'll make a motion to accept the comparative budget March 2022 with the one change on page five or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And then let you guys still work on getting the first two items.
Yep.
Somehow. Then I'll make a motion to accept the restricted funds report. And then also include the treasurer's report for the town at this point, because then we'll move over to the golf course, right?
Yep.
So right now, everything's for the town, for the town comparative budget of March, the restricted funds and the treasurer's report. Okay, all right.
Do you have anything, Chris?
Nope.
We have all that.
Okay. I'm in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
You want to move into the golf course?
Yeah, on the golf course, we're still doing, just, we're doing really well with the, with cash. We haven't had to take any of the money that we have in our, in our line of credit. And we have the 287,000 in the pro shop. Our expenses for the month of April will be slightly higher. We were running in the mid-30s the first three months and it goes up to around 70 for expenses in April. So we're still tracking well. If, if, we may be actually, I think we may be doing a little better than we did last year because we had to take it, I think we took the 100,000 at the end of May. We might even be a little beyond that this year if we, even if we have to do it, if we start seeing a significant, if we have a good May, we may be able to avoid it altogether. But we do have that cushion. So the golf course is, is operating the way it's supposed to as far as expenses go through the, the off-season. We're in the buildup now. And actually, for everybody's information, on Friday, the 29th, the golf course opens for front nine. And the following Friday, I believe they're opening the whole 18.
Yeah.
So we're on schedule for that. And from what I understand from our golf expert next to me, the golf course is in great shape.
I went there this morning.
Somebody's played it already, hasn't it?
No, I haven't played it. No, but the greens came through the winter.
Nice.
David said they came through the best he's seen in the five years he's been here.
That's great.
And one of the things that helped a lot was a couple of years ago, you weren't with us yet. We, we got green covers. The original ones didn't actually fit the whole green, so water was coming in on the sides and killing it. We got, I don't know, about five or $6,000 worth of covers that are bigger than the greens and now.
Sheds of water.
They throw the water out. They're big enough that the water goes down the banks on the sides. Robert has done, he's been in, off and on all winter. All the machines are ready to go.
Great.
They've been tuned up and they do have some new ones that we okayed.
Yeah.
Last year. One question that I have and it's, we had talked about an awning for the deck and they had someone come in and look at it. And I just want to put this out to make sure we're all in agreement. This is in the golf course budget, not the town budget.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all.
Well, it's out of their restricted funds.
Right.
The golf course budget is the town budget, but we've given them a capital that they,
and I was down at the golf course too today, but I didn't really take a look at the greens. So I was looking to see if the burgers were cooking. But they, 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 I mean, do we have a price on it? They gave us a price.
We did get a price and I haven't seen it for a while. We're gonna, we're gonna resurrect that and get it moving. Um, one of the things.
Both to David and Steve.
Yeah.
I was just like, it's in your budget.
Right.
To get it. So just order it and it comes out of your capital restricted fund.
Right. And, and just so everybody's aware, the capital restricted fund is slightly higher than it would normally be because a lot of the equipment that we were leasing this year came in like three months late.
Yeah.
Four months late. Actually, some of it still isn't there.
Right.
They keep sending it to us and we have to ensure one piece because we, we got to wait for the VIN numbers and all of that.
Come July 1, they're going to have another 100.
They're going to have another 100.
Put in there.
Yes.
And that's why they have to keep track of or keep on pushing like.
Yep.
How many years are left on that lease because the money's coming out of the capital.
Right.
Fund, restricted fund.
And they do.
Not out of their regular annual.
No, it doesn't come out of their annual budget. The only thing that comes out of their annual budget is the golf carts. The golf cart lease is part of that.
Where did you get a quote from?
I don't remember. It's been so long since I looked at it.
They put it out to two or three places.
Yeah, it was a while ago. It was last, actually, like, like September, October or something.
It was, it was right at the end of the last season.
And, yeah.
And they do have someone coming in, they have places where the siding is starting to deteriorate. And similar to the roof, which they replaced before it started leaking into the building, they're going to go through this summer and have.
Tucked up.
Any, any siding. And, and mostly it's at the bottom where it splashes back up. But they are going to have that.
It's amazing how roof didn't leak.
Yeah.
That thing was a rough shape.
They got it done before, before it started.
I, like I had said to David and to Steve, I don't know why we're talking about the, you know, this awning. I already thought it was going to be up last year.
Right.
So let's just get it done.
Well, it came in late. They didn't want to put it up before the winter.
Yeah.
Plus they already bought it.
No, the price came in and we.
The price, the price came in and it's.
They didn't want to buy it before COVID.
That's why I was asking who you guys are, because they're really hard to get.
Yeah.
And they're, you guys are really busy.
And the price that they got was to have it installed and then come in at the end of the season and take the fabric down and put it inside the building so snow and ice won't rip it off the awning.
Kind of got beautiful green one, I should just saw them, but.
Yeah.
Came off a jacks.
Well, go down and talk to them.
So yeah, move ahead with that, just as long as, you know.
Yeah, just, I just got to refresh myself where we are.
They're not going to get it, they're not going to get it in before.
No, it won't be in before July 1.
You know, the money will be there.
Well, and they're also.
What, June 15th and then you get 30 days anyways.
They have someone that's going to like resurface the deck out front, so they don't want the awning until they do that anyway.
All that.
So you got that.
Great.
Okay, but that was anything I had for that.
So I'll make a motion to accept the golf course comparative March 2022.
Second.
I'm in favor.
All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the golf course treasurer's report. I mean, I was just going to say for the end of March, to be telling me that you have 310, 311,000 between the two accounts, I'm used to seeing negatives.
Well, 95 of it's the capital money.
Yeah, but we never had that either.
Oh, I know.
All right. To say we have 311,000 with 95 of it being restricted for capital needs.
Right.
You know, I have not seen that, so.
Okay. I'm in favor of accepting the golf treasurer's report. Please say aye.
Aye.
And you had mentioned something about the driveway permit?
Well, the driveway permit came just the day before I was going away and I haven't, I apologize, I haven't had a chance to go out there. So I'm thinking we have a, a special meeting, we'll be warning for Friday, and I will have it reviewed by then and we can, we can do the driveway permit then. And just other items that are going on in general, the Highway Department has started sweeping and cleaning roads. We are beginning to grade roads.
They're on the access road today.
Right, we've ordered our, our tractor with the, the mower and we're expecting that here in the next couple of weeks.
Good.
And we are on a full lease. We turn it in at the end. That was a great recommendation from, from Chris as to how that's going to work. It did save us some money, it put us right back in the budget. So that option has worked out very well. And I think that overall, and, and we have started, Jeff has started working on all the, the rec fields and, and the rec facilities, so all of that, all of that work is in progress. And we're headed towards spring and summer, so I think everything's going pretty well, assuming we have one.
What shorts today is nice outfit.
So that's all I have for tonight for that.
Where's the driveway permit?
He doesn't have it yet. I have, I have the paper. I left it at the, I didn't have a chance to go, I have to go actually look at it and see if there's any requirements and I just haven't gotten there yet.
Gotcha.
It was turned in the day he was leaving to go away for.
Well, it was like day before because I got it on the agenda, but I just didn't have a chance to, to review it.
Okay, so those of you that are tuned in, do you have anything you want to add to what we discussed this evening? Anything we missed or any comment on what our discussion was?
I have nothing, but thank you very much for asking.
All right, thank you, Kurt. No one else is indicating.
All right, so other business?
The only other thing I had was that stuff I, when I was at the golf course today and I've just told you everything. So I have nothing else there.
Thank you for, one thing, thank you for changing the sign at the bottom of the road and acknowledging Mary. That's well done.
Yep.
Makes us look very good as a community.
I'm not giving you any thanks, don't look at me.
I see you all day. I know I'm not going to get any.
Lucky, hey, lucky you.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session at 7:52 for legal and.
Both are legal, right?
What?
Both are legal.
One is for the, you know, so.
Short-term, what is?
And then also to go over the contract of the employee for the recreation.
Yes, right.
Legal and contract.
It's budget, it's contract. It's a budget discussion primarily.
Personnel.
Yeah, okay.
All right, you on?